Is it time? Let's welcome everyone to this March 13th meeting of the Lewis and Clark County Commissioners, and we will start off with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are going to start off this day with a proclamation declaring March 17th, 2025, as Irish Heritage Day. This proclamation will be formally read to you and to us by Andy O'Hunt-Housen, who is closest thing to an Irishman that we have on the commission. So are you going to like stand up and do arm?
I was gonna do it right here, but if you want me to.
I think you should. Unless before.
Okay, do you want to do this prior to introductions and all that, or do you want to do?
I want to do it now while I remember it.
Do it now, okay. I'll go out here and do it.
Yes, you look at the TV cam. Whoa, don't break it.
Good morning, top of the morning to you. Andy O'Hunt-Housen here. Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolf, all that are out there. It's my pleasure to read the proclamation into the record of declaring or proclaiming Irish Heritage Day. Lewis and Clark County, Montana proclamation. Whereas Thomas Francis Marr came to Montana Territory as its appointed secretary and first acting governor. Whereas Lewis and Clark County was and is the destination of many Irish immigrants who came with a vision of opportunity, hope for freedom, and religious liberty. And whereas many men and women of Irish heritage left contributions to our state and community, such as the Cathedral of St. Helena and Carroll College. And whereas we wish to share their many generous contributions, celebrating their legacy of determination, hard work, and hard work throughout the county. And whereas it is our desire that Irish goodwill, charity, and sense of place will be shared not only this special day, but throughout the year. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Lewis and Clark County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Monday, March 17th, 2025, St. Patrick's Day, as Irish Heritage Day in Lewis and Clark County, dated this 13th day of March, 2025.
Hey, I think you all stand up. Recognize the importance that it has, thank you.
And Chair Payne, just a note, on Monday, the 17th, which is the day that has been proclaimed, St. Patty's Day, at eight in the morning, there'll be the raising of the Irish flag at the Capitol. And then the governor, I believe it'll be the governor, and myself will be there to read the proclamation, and I think Irish dancers, and they'll have a whole celebration that morning. So between eight and 10, see you at the Capitol. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O- Oh, Hunt-Housen, sorry. Now, back to the regular programming. I'm supposed to introduce everybody here. To my left is Commissioner Tom O'Rourke.
Good morning, Chair Opain.
And taking care of us and introducing us and reminding us of our timing is Brandi O'Spangler. To my right is, of course, the world famous Commissioner Tom O'Hunt-Housen. And I- Andy O'Hunt-Housen, sorry, he'll answer to anything. And our legal beagles, Nico Hash and Keven Shea, and the ever mysterious Roger Balls, who is our CAO. Welcome, gentlemen and lady. Okay. We have Consent Action Item 3A by Roger Balls and Marnie Bentley.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. As you've already stated, this is the consent action item. It's item 3A. It is vendor claims report for the week ending March 14, 2025. Staff recommends approval. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Are there any comments or questions from the commission? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne and I would move to approve the consent action item 3A as explained by Mr. Balls.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the consent action item as explained by Mr. Balls, Consent Action Item Number 3A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to nothing. Okay, a bid award by Dan Carlin, number four on our agenda.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. I'm Dan Carlin, county engineer. On February 27th of 2025, four bids were opened for the Highway 435 Crack Seal, Chip Seal, and Paint Project. Project generally consists of crack sealing, chip sealing, and paint striping 10.1 miles of Highway 435 near Augusta, Montana. The work also includes paint striping Sun Canyon Road from Highway 287 to the Lewis and Clark County Transfer Station and Benchmark Road from Highway 435 to Broadway Street in Lewis and Clark County. Four bids were received, and one of the four was disqualified from consideration because the bid envelope was not properly addressed, rendering the bid non-responsive. Funding for this project is from the road infrastructure budget. After review of bids, staff recommends awarding the contract to the low bidder, Helena Sand and Gravel Incorporated of Helena, Montana, for a unit price-based bid total amount of $534,420.75, and authorize the chair to sign all applicable contract documents, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dan. Does anybody have any questions with Mr. Carlin?
Chair Payne, just for clarification, explanation to the public. When a bid is non-responsive, that comes from a- I guess I'll back up a little bit. When we ask for bids or put out a request for bids, there's a very specific criteria that the bidders have to meet. And so when that checklist of criteria is not met, that bid could be deemed unresponsive and then not considered. I just want to explain that a little bit to the public. Why did you eliminate a bid? We don't have to get into specifics necessarily, but just the understanding of the process and how it works.
Absolutely, Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen. So in the project manual and the bidding documents, there is a section called the instructions to bidders. It has very specific criteria that are required of each bidder when they submit a bid. In this instance, one of those criteria, which in fact applies to all of the bids that we receive, they are required to name, label their bid envelope with their name and address. This particular bid did not have their name and address on their bidding envelope. So when we open that bid, we do not know who is submitting a bid. That's a criteria in there. That's been industry standard for many, many decades. There's also other provisions, of course, that would apply in some of these instances that could render a bidder non-responsive. For instance, they forget to include a bid bond or some form of bid security. They could also forget to notarize their bid, which is an indication that perhaps they didn't.
Maybe not get in on time or something like that.
Yeah, there's a variety of different situations that could render a bid non-responsive.
And though, Chair Payne, if I could, and though any one of those might seem small, all are held to the same standard, and we have to follow our rules and make sure that we are consistent throughout. So that's why this is occurring.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt-Housen, that's absolutely correct.
Thanks, good. I just wanted to explain it to the public. Thanks, Chair Payne.
And thank you, Andy. I'm sure that that's, you know, sometimes it seems like these rules are sort of arbitrary and capricious, but they're not. Everybody plays by the same rules. We're spending public money. We've got to maintain an absolute standard so that everybody gets a fair shake. Guess my brother won't be getting a bid, will he? Darn. Okay. Then, is there any- Tom, do you have anything?
No.
Is there any public comment on any of, on this item? Seeing no public comment, and if you don't tell us now, you should forever speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, we need a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move that we award the bid for Highway 435 Crack Seal, Chip, Paint Project to Helena Sand and Gravel for $534,420.75, as presented by Mr. Carlin.
We need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the bid award to Helena Sand and Gravel for this Highway 435 Crack Seal, Chip Seal, and Paint Project. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Passes on a three to nothing vote. Thank you. And I'll be signing that document right here. Number five on our agenda is the bid award for the Murray MAU replacement, and I'm sure Ms. Zachero will explain what the heck an MAU is.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. I'm Audra Zachero, Assistant Director of Public Works. An MAU, to answer your first question, is a makeup air unit.
A what?
A makeup air unit.
A makeup air unit.
Yes, I'll go into a little more detail in my name. On February 25th, one bid was opened for the Murray Makeup Air Unit Replacement Project. The project generally consists of replacing the exhaust heat recovery air handling unit located on the roof of the Michael A. Murray Building, which operates as a health and medical facility. Funding for this project is from an American Rescue Plan Act grant, and work is anticipated to take place mid to late summer of 2025. After reviewing the bid, staff recommends awarding both the base bid amount of $175,976 and the additive alternate number one for a complete balancing of the unit of $14,102, for a total contract amount of $190,078, and authorize the chair to sign all applicable contract documents. Are there any other questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Is there is any- Is there any public comment? Speak now or forever hold your peace. This is the only time you get to do this. Okay. Well, no public comment. Let's have a motion here.
Chair Payne and I would move to award the bid for the Murray MAU replacement as explained by Audra Zachero. Second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Excuse me for interrupting.
Go ahead, Mr. Balls.
Perhaps I missed it, but on the record, did we actually state the name of the company?
I'm sure.
I know it's in your backup information, but I don't.
All right. I'll do that. The company that this is being awarded to.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, Roger Balls, thank you for bringing that huge air to my attention. I'm very embarrassed. The contractor is Sleeping Giant Incorporated of Montana City.
Mechanical?
Yes.
Incorporated.
I can, I'll just incorporate that. I'll restate my motion that we, that we award the bid as explained by Audra Zachero, Sleeping Giant Incorporated, for a total of $190,078. Second.
With a slight amendment, according to the document that I am supposed to sign, this award is to Sleeping Giant Mechanical Incorporated. They are the successful bidder. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair Payne.
Okay, with that amendment to the motion, everyone in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign. This bid award is approved by all of us, and so be it. Sign this. Ah. And number, item number six on our agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and CTA Incorporated, doing business as Cushing Terrill. Go for it.
Good morning again, Chair Payne, Commissioners. I'm Audra Zachero, again for the record, Assistant Director of Public Works. This contract before you this morning is with CTA Inc., doing business as Cushing Terrill, to perform consulting services for the courthouse roof and gutter project. Contract scope is twofold and includes preparing design and procurement documents for the courthouse roof replacement, and also to assist with the corresponding bidding and construction administration and researching the original gutter and downspout system that is largely unexposed and inoperable, and provide a recommendation on how to proceed with repairs or replacement to that gutter system. This contract is for $45,663, and work will be completed before December 31st of 2025. Budget authority for this project is from the building's capital improvement fund. Staff recommends approval of the contract with Cushing Terrill for $45,663, with the scope to be completed by December 31st, 2025, and authorize the chair to sign. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the commission? I just, this is, as I recall, we've had problems around the courthouse with ice issues from the drains not functioning correctly and the water running across the sidewalk. Am I remembering that correctly?
Great question, Chair Payne, Commissioners. Ice is a problem also. There's moisture on the interior of the building that we're trying to discover where that moisture is coming from. It was suggested that perhaps it's coming from the gutter system partially operating and not operating correctly. So because it's covered by the existing roof, some of it, we have to expose it, and a good time to do that is when we replace the roof.
Okay, thank you. Very interesting. I'm hearing music. Oh, it's probably because it's Irish. Is there any public comment on this matter? Speak now or forever hold your peace. I need a motion on this.
Chair Payne and I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and CTA Incorporated, doing GBA, Cushing Terrill, as explained by Audra Zachero. Second.
Does the commission have any other comments or anything you want to say? Okay, seeing none. It has been moved and seconded that we approve this contract with CTA Incorporated. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. This contract is approved three to one, or three to nothing, excuse me. Three to nothing. I'm just keeping you on your toes, you know? Okay. And we shall proceed with getting that fixed. Number seven on our agenda this morning is contract number 224017 between the Montana Department of Environmental Quality and Lewis and Clark Public Health, as presented by our friend, Drenda Niemann. Thank you, Drenda.
Good morning, Chair Payne and Commissioners. Excuse me, I'm Drenda Niemann, Health Officer and Department Director for Lewis and Clark Public Health. And this morning, I have before you a contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Montana Department of Environmental Quality. This is a contract that we've had in place since the 90s with DEQ, and it's to complete subdivision reviews. These reviews are conducted by our staff sanitarians on new subdivisions, and they focus on water supply, wastewater, solid waste, stormwater. These are typically small subdivisions. They're 10 lots or less, for the most part. And these are subdivisions that have wells and septics rather than public water and public sewer. They're, those larger subdivisions are done by DEQ. These smaller ones are done as a contracted service by Lewis and Clark Public Health. So these subdivisions can be, they're exempt from the Planning Act, so they don't go through the typical subdivision planning process. They often are reviews because they're lifting restrictions that were once in place on the property. There are family transfers. Sometimes there's rewrites and changes to the use of the property. So those are, those are the typical subdivisions that we see and do the reviews for water, wastewater, solid waste, and stormwater. We are reimbursed by Department of Environmental Quality based on the calculations located in Appendix B of the contract. It's a complicated fee structure, so I won't go through those details, but let me know if you have any questions on the fee structure. These are two-year contracts, and so this, this particular contract started in 2023, July 1st, 2023, and expires June 30th of 2025. So this is coming to you very delayed, and it's due to delays that happen at the state level. So DEQ staff capacity and legal reviews and such has delayed this contract coming before you. We've been doing the work, and we've been getting paid for the work. So this is a late contract coming from DEQ. We kept asking for it and kept asking for it, and we got it in September of 2024. And by the time it made it through all of the process, it is now coming before you in March. We anticipate getting a fresh new two-year contract starting July 1st of 2025. We have not yet received that contract, however. Staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm not sure I have a question for you. I have a question for our county attorneys. This, this contract has been in place, and we have been acting under it for, what, about 18 months now? And now we've got four months until it expires? What the heck kind of a contract is this? I mean, you're supposed to have it in place before you start, particularly when we're dealing with public money. Are we in any way going to get sued over some of this?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, that's the first time I've tried to speak all morning, so excuse that throat clearing. The process in which counties and the department review these, I'm going to call them exemptions from the subdivision and Platteanak review, that's kind of a normal course. As Ms. Niemann said, it's something that we've been doing for years, if I'm not mistaken. So kind of in the same line with what we've seen a lot of these contracts or grant funding agreements. We know that the process is coming. We're still trying to provide the work, and then we're kind of documenting it on. At this point, you're right, you know, there's a couple more months left, but this is something that the county has been doing the work for, and we've also been reimbursed from the state for that work. So I think that this is kind of administratively clearing up the reality of the functions between both the department and the county.
As a former attorney who has written and worked on many contracts, this is just fraught with potential for somebody to object. I'm hoping, and maybe under the new administration, the DEQ will do a little better at getting this done. Okay, I'm just.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, really, so DEQ, it's Montana DEQ?
Ah, I meant the new- Didn't he reappoint, didn't he appoint a new DEQ head? I mean, our governor, or maybe not.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, yeah.
This is outside of the realm of our control. Thank you kindly. All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms.?
Chair Payne, I do have, I do have one. Do you have a proxy for how much money we bring in yearly on, on this contract?
Chair Payne and Commissioner Rolf, I know that we do between 60 and 70 per year on average of subdivisions. The funding fluctuates depending on what it is that we are reviewing for each of those. I don't, excuse me, I don't have a number off the top of my head, but I can certainly get you one.
Yeah, I'm just curious if you get a minute, maybe send that to me.
I sure can.
Thank you.
Just as a point, and I think you have it in your folders as well, there is a subdivision review fee calculation attached as Appendix B to this, this contract. So that would give you some idea as to what they're charging for a little more further information for your. Okay, any other comments or questions from, from the commission? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, this ends public comment on this matter. We have a motion, please.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the contract between the Montana Department of Environmental Quality and Lewis and Clark Public Health, as presented by Director, or Health Officer Niemann, excuse me.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between the Montana Department of Environmental Quality and Lewis and Clark Public Health, as presented by Drenda Niemann. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion passes three to nothing, and this contract is approved. Number eight on our agenda is board appointment. And I think we're supposed to have Connor Fitzpatrick here, and Connor had better, I just saw him over by the commission offices.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, if you'd like to take a moment, we'll see if we can find Mr. Fitzpatrick and take care of the item.
Four and a half minute break. All being present and accounted for, I call this commission meeting back to order. Mr. Fitzpatrick, you are next on our agenda. We've got board fire service, it's the York Fire Service Board Appointments.
Yes, indeed. Madam Chair, Commissioners, apologies. Had a conversation about getting things set up and ready to go for the upcoming school election that went a little bit longer than I intended. So I bring before you today two appointments for vacancies on the York Fire Service area. The prior trustees Julie Oats and J.R. McFadden both had to resign. If I remember correctly, they're both moving out of the district, and they are therefore no longer eligible to serve. To that end, though, we have Sarah Addy-Dan, I think I'm pronouncing that right. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. And Suzanne C. Pedrusny, who have both stepped up and are willing to serve. So those seats that they are looking to fill are up for election in May 2026, so next year. So this is a one-year appointment for them, at which case they'll be up in May 2026. They are both residents and registered voters within the York Fire Service area, so therefore, the elections office recommends appointment.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? No. Did you say no?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, and this ends your opportunity to make remarks from the public, to take remarks. to take remarks. Let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the appointments of Sarah Abadon and Susan C. Podrusny as onto the York Fire District, Fire, York Fire Service Area Board of Trustees.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, wait a second, I have to ask if the Commission has any further comment. Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appointment of Sarah O. Addydan and Suzanne C. O. Podrusny to the York Fire Service Area Board of Trustees to fill out the unfinished portion of the earlier appointments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, these two appointments are done.
Thank you, Commissioners, and again, apologies for being late.
We have now come to the point in our agenda where we will take public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda above. I see no public, and no one comes forward with a public comment. This ends your opportunity to speak today. We will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.